Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning and welcome to the February 18th County Commission meeting. I'm Brittany Clampett and thanks for joining us today. Just want to let you know about a few things we've got going on around the county. Of course Cedric County Zoo has their Winter Wednesday going through the end of this month, so be sure to get there either today or next Wednesday for $2.50 admission. Exploration Place, Ninth Annual Death by Chocolate, Science Never Tasted So Sweet. Tickets are still available for that, so go to exploration.org for more information and to purchase tickets. Interest Bank Arena, we've got some events to round out February. We've got three different Thunder Hockey Games versus Rapid City, Tulsa and Salina. The Avett Brothers will be here on February 26th and the Thunder versus, or excuse me, the Wichita Forest versus Salina will be here February 28th. Commissioners and the public out there, we also wanted to draw your attention to our website, cedriccounty.org. If you go to the front page, we have a new feature here. It's called "Our Service Stories." Just wanting to let you guys know about, a little bit more about what we're spending your tax dollars on. So if you come here to our featured stories and click this first link here, you can read some stories about how we impacted the county in the last week. So one of our examples here is the Cedric County Call Center to reduce costs, this call center has cross transfer Spanish translation, which is allowed for a reduction in previous translation costs with a private vendor. So there are a few more examples there that you can read through. Again, it's just right on the front page of our county website, cedriccounty.org. So click that link, take a look and then enjoy those stories. We'll hopefully have some more coming out soon for what we've done this week. So with that Chairman Ransell, you'll kick off the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'll call to order the Board, the meeting of the Board of Cedric County Commissioners for February 18th, 2015, Madam Court, first item.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransell.
Present. Next item.
Appointments. Item A, resolution appointing Jonathan Holmes to the Cedric County Public Building Commission.
Good morning, Richard, Eastern County Councilor. Commissioners, this is Commissioner Howell's appointment to this board. It's a four-year appointment and I recommend you adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion when you adopt the resolution.
Second. Madam Court, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman, Chairman Ransell.
Aye. Is Mr. Holmes here? Very good.
Good morning.
If you'd raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Public Building Commission so help me God.
I do. All right. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to getting going with this. It's an honor to be nominated for this, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Public hearing. Item B, post-annexation public hearing, city of Derby, Annexation Ordinance Number 2006.
Good morning Commissioners, Bob Barnacott, Assistant County Councilor. Let me get a couple maps up on the screen. First, we will... That's the close-up, so let's go to the wide view. This is one of your five-year post-annexation hearings where you're required to review whether a city has provided services in accordance with a service plan it prepared for the annexation of an area. We have a city of Derby annexation here, as you can see, the general city limits of Derby. And then in red is the area that was annexed back in 2010. I will go to the close-up now. As you can see, it's on the north side of 63rd or Patriot Avenue. This is more of a close-up view. It's about 30 tracks ranging from, I think, a little under one acre up to about 20 acres, probably. Again, your purpose here is to determine if the city has provided services in accordance with the service plan. It's a public hearing. You sit in a quasi-judicial manner where you're hearing evidence and making a finding or determination. Obviously, we have certain due process requirements. If you've had any ex parte contacts with anybody from the area or from the city about this matter, you should disclose those on the record. If you've received information outside of the hearing process that you want to consider as part of your determinations, you want to make sure that information gets disclosed on the record as well. Statute requires we hold this hearing five years after the annexation. We have to provide notice to the landowners in the city. That notice has been sent. We also have a separate process where we send out a pre-hearing questionnaire to all the landowners in the area, asking them if they've received the services. We usually get a few responses back. Out of the 30 letters we sent, we got two responses back, which is a bit low for normally what we would receive. One of them was a statement that they just had not received any additional services after the annexation. The other person had a couple of specific complaints, one about the cracked ceiling on one of the streets in his neighborhood, and then about a tree that was leaning and presenting a dangerous situation on the back of his property. The city was apprised of those responses and followed up with their response to the questionnaire to show what services they had provided. All the landowner responses and the city responses are in your record, and if you want to include them as part of your hearing consideration, you may make a motion to consider them as part of your hearing record. We have representatives of the city here. I don't know if we have any landowners here to testify. I'll go through the plan requirements real quickly and talk about specifically the service plan and some of the other comments that I could make in this process, and then we can open the public hearing. The service plan requirements under the statute require that it provide a sketch showing the area, city limits, land use pattern, streets, water and sewer in the area and in the area proposed to be annexed. There has to be a statement of the intent of the city to what major municipal services they plan to provide, an estimated cost and how they're going to finance those services, a timetable for extension of services that will be provided upon annexation or perhaps later upon petition or request, and then how the, any existing township or special district services will be provided at a level equator better than prior to the annexation. The Derby Service Plan generally meets all of those requirements, so I don't see any deficiencies there. In particular, the Derby Service Plan provided that they would do street maintenance on the interior streets that are public roads. They were going to add some new street signage, stop sign and a no outlet sign, I believe. Other improvements to the streets would be made upon a petition for a special benefit district. They would install streetlights on request of a majority of the neighborhood, provide water and sewer on petition. The area was currently being served, was then and is currently being served by Rural Water District, so they are not on city water. Most of the units have onsite wastewater, although I think maybe some have transitioned to perhaps city sewer. The city representatives can respond to that if they need to. The service plan also indicated they would provide stream maintenance, ditch and culvert cleaning, and then typically the general police services, fire services, code enforcement, those kinds of things. Derby has a unique situation where they have a city, somewhat unique, citywide solid waste collection contract, and so residents being annexed into the city were required to enter into that contract. There are some exemptions available, but that's another service that Derby offers. So the city responses basically had provided the services, indicated they had done everything they said. They provided comments about how many police calls they'd had in the area, how many fire calls, how many code enforcement and building permit applications. They can also speak to that if you have any questions. So at this point, unless you have any questions for me, I would recommend you open the public hearing. If you have any ex parte contacts, make those disclosures at the beginning of the hearing in case there needs to be any response to those contacts. Receive any testimony from the city and the landowners. Close your hearing and then make the finding whether or not they have provided those services.
Okay, thank you, Bob. I guess before we open the hearing then, I guess I'll ask the Commissioners if they have had any ex parte communications they'd like to disclose at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a meeting in my office with the city manager Kathy Sexton and City Council Member Chuck Warren. They wanted to bring me some information regarding this upcoming hearing, and so I did receive that in my office. And we did not discuss the details much, but they did present basically information sorting this packet and asked me if I had any questions, which I didn't have any. So that is the only contact I had with the city. I did have a couple of constituents that I'm familiar with that live in the area. I go to church with them and we did not discuss any details, but I did make them aware that the hearing was going to happen. Didn't listen to, I didn't make any comments to them or they didn't make any comments back to me, just letting them know that the hearing was going to happen. I don't see them in the audience today. And with that, that's all my contacts, but I wanted to disclose those items. Thank you.
Doesn't look like anybody else. I personally had no ex parte communication with anybody, so at this time, we'll open up the public hearing to hear the city of Derby Annexation Order Number 2006. Do we have anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this? Anyone from the city want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I'm Kathy Sexton. I'm the city manager. Our city planner Cody Byrd is here, and we just want to thank you for your time this morning, but I don't need to get into any details unless you all have questions about anything. We do, as Bob mentioned, we do feel like we have done everything we said we would do in these five years. We're taking care of the streets, the ditches, the sewer problem, et cetera. So I think most residents are pretty happy being a part of the city of Derby now.
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
And one last time, I want to say, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and... Any comments or questions from Commissioners or from Mr. Barnacott? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a couple of comments if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Again, this is just an area, it's in my district. It's literally one minute from my home, and so I'm familiar with the area. I've been through these streets many, many times, talking to the people in that neighborhood, and I'm familiar with the location within the city. It is a nice, quiet neighborhood, and as I've talked to people there, they're pretty happy. So I would just say that I, you know, the, one of the letters that we did receive from one of the two that was mentioned by Mr. Barnacott is from a resident that was right on 63rd Street. And that is a four-lane road with streetlights, and so I don't know what the city could do to change those services at that point. He's as far in the city as I think as you can get, but anyway, I do believe that the city has met their requirements, so I would like to make a motion if it's okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, that we adopt the, let's see, what's the right words here? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Typically, we don't prepare a recommended action. We wait to see what the hearing is. So the motion in this case, if you want to make a finding that they have provided the services, is simply a move we make, the finding that they have provided the services.
I make a motion, we agree that with the, we have done, the city of Derby has done their part on this zoning hearing and they have no problems. Didn't say that very well, but you get that idea.
That they have provided the services.
Yeah, they have provided the services. Thank you. All right.
Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any comments? Seeing none, Madam Court, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransell.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next item, please.
Thank you.
New Business. Item C, Presentation of Career Development Certificates.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you can see, we have a rather large group for our first presentation of 2015. My name is Greg Baker and with me is Cheryl Orm from the Division of Human Resources, and this is our first quarter presentation of our career development certificates for employees who have completed a series of required and elective classes in one of four areas, either supervisory management development, transitioning to supervisor, professional development, or diversity. And I'd really like to congratulate, this is a very special group as many of them this morning are receiving multiple certificates at the same time. Several of them receiving as many as three. To earn their certificates, as I said, they've completed required and elective classes live and online, and some of them have taken as many as years to complete this. We'd like to congratulate them for their commitment to continuous improvement in their own personal career development, and we'd also like to thank those who have supported them, including their supervisors and managers. We have a total of 14 employees who earned their certificates today. This morning, we have 12 who are able to be with us. The first one, Nicole Briggs, completed supervisory management development. Congratulations. Trey Davis, supervisory management development. Janessa Dixon, transitioning to supervisor and professional development. Congratulations. Beau Gray, supervisory management development. Jonathan Haley, transitioning to supervisor, professional development, and diversity. Yes. Ryan Kilby, supervisory management development, transitioning to supervisor and professional development. Congratulations. Matthew Kitchen, supervisory management development, professional development, and diversity. Good job. Matt Manning, supervisory management development, transitioning to supervisor. Yes, indeed. Laura Myers, supervisory management development, transitioning to supervisor, professional development. Congratulations, yes. Pam Utter, transitioning to supervisor, professional development. Congratulations. And Sue Wheatley, professional development. Commissioners, thank you for providing us time to recognize these individuals this morning.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone for all your hard work. Congratulations on your achievements and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We'll give a little time here to clear. All right, Madam Court, next item, please.
Item D, request by Minnehaw Township to change its boundaries.
Good morning Commissioners, Bob Barnacott again, Assistant County Councilor. I'll get you a map up on the screen. This is something that you have the power to do under KSA 19-212. You have what we would refer to as lawyers' plenary power to change or alter the boundaries of a township at any time during any of your open meetings. This is a somewhat unique situation, and I'll go through some of the history here. We're dealing with the city of Eastborough, as you can see on the map, and there's a portion of Eastborough that is on the west side of Woodlawn. The city of Eastborough is a city of third class, incorporated, I understand, back in 1937. The Woodlawn Heights Edition is the area that lays west of Woodlawn. It was platted in 1923 and has been included as part of Eastborough, I believe, since 1937. The Woodlawn Heights Edition is actually located in the old Wichita Township, which shared a boundary with Minnehaw Township of Woodlawn. So everything east of Woodlawn would have been Minnehaw Township, everything west of Woodlawn would have been Wichita Township. Cities of third class are considered part of the township's tax unit boundaries. They don't have to pay a road levy, but they do pay the general mill levy for the township in terms of their budget. Wichita Township had largely been annexed by the city of Wichita in the early, by the early 60s, so there was very little left because the township's boundary does not include portions of first or second-class cities. At that time, the Board of County Commissioners, under their power under the township statutes, disorganized Wichita Township and took some of the remaining parts of Wichita Township and attached them to both Kechai and Minnehaw Townships. For some reason, we don't show an official record of the Woodlawn Heights Edition being officially attached to Minnehaw Township or to any other township. However, we do know through doing our research that at least starting in '63, the Woodlawn Heights Edition was included as part of the Minnehaw Township boundary for election precinct purposes. Later, in the early 70s, Minnehaw Township imposed levy taxes, general levy taxes on the Woodlawn Heights Edition, and they continued to pay those taxes just up until last year, I believe. What happened was the clerk was reviewing its tax unit boundaries as they do an annual certification of those boundaries, and determined there was no basis for including the Woodlawn Heights Edition in the Minnehaw Township tax unit boundaries, and so they corrected their maps to reflect the official reality rather than what had been shown in practice. Since that was done, we've had a request both from the city of Eastborough and the Minnehaw Township to have the Woodlawn Heights Edition added back in officially as part of the Minnehaw Township boundary. Again, you have the authority to do this under KSA 19-212-7. If you were to do this, approve this request, we would have a resolution prepared and put on a consent agenda, and then the county clerk would have to be directed to prepare a plat of the new township boundaries. They would, going forward, they would certify that now as part of the Minnehaw Township. The election precincts would be restored, I believe, so there's really little extra work to be done. I think this is fairly easily done if you so desire to do it. Minnehaw Township has been providing street sweeping services four times a year and picking up storm debris removal. They're doing that under an interlocal contract. Those materials are in your record, and they also have letter authority for picking up storm debris. We sent a letter out about a month ago to all the residents of Woodlawn Heights Edition to let them know the history of this matter, how we got to where we're at, and what is being requested by the township and the city. We let them know that this was going to be on the February 18th agenda. This is not a formal public hearing, but you certainly may take comment from the audience if anybody would like to speak. I believe we have representatives of the township here and perhaps also the city in case you have any questions. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask that you proceed as you see fit.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Doesn't look like it. Do we have any questions or comments from Commissioner? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that representatives from both the township and the city of Eastborough are here and they'd be happy to speak if we have specific questions. I think that they're considering this a fairly routine matter. It's agreed upon by the township leadership. Trustee Don Bragg has been in contact with me and the city of Eastborough, I think Mayor Dave Anderson's here right now, and their council and their leadership of Eastborough is in favor of this. I think that this is the only city of a third class or a portion of a city of the third class that is not attached to a township, so, and the, I think statute calls for all cities of the third class to be attached to a township. So this is kind of cleaning up an oversight from 30 years ago, and the parties involved are in agreement, so I think it's something that we should proceed with and approve the change in the boundaries. But I'll make a motion at a later date, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, just a quick question. Do we have any other, are we confident now that we don't have any other circumstances like this in any other parts of the county going forward, where we've got a leftover or an area that has been overlooked like this one apparently was?
Pretty high confidence in the statement that no part of a third-class city is not included as part of a township. We have some unusual situations in the old Delano Township, which also has been disorganized. I understand there are parts of that that are not part of any township, but those are like the Cedric County Park and the zoo, so those are larger areas that you own, and so we didn't attach those to any townships, and those don't have residents, they don't have voters, that kind of thing. So generally, yes, I think this would be, this would be a very odd exception if you were to leave this outside of any township boundary.
Okay, well, I wasn't so much concerned about the direct fact in front of us as well as if we had anything else that might be similar or comparable in some other part of the county. So appreciate that clarification for the record. Thank you.
Any other comments by Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if there are none, I would make a motion that we approve the request by Minnehaw Township to change its boundaries.
Second. Do we have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. Is the township trustee here? I'd like to ask a couple of quick questions if you don't mind.
My name is Dave Crockett. I'm an attorney here in Wichita and represent Minnehaw Township.
Well, thank you for coming up. The question is, what is your, can you please explain your thoughts as to why you would support the idea of leaving the boundaries as is drawn on this map here today?
I can actually address that from two separate perspectives. One is counsel for Minnehaw Township, and the second is a resident of Woodlawn Heights for more than 30 years, the subject area. Ever since we moved in, 30 years and some ago, we considered ourselves a part of Minnehaw, and we would vote for Minnehaw officers, just as we did last fall. We pay a very modest tax. Minnehaw furnishes, as Mr. Barnacott pointed out, services, and we've been very satisfied to be a part of Eastborough as well as a part of Minnehaw Township. From Minnehaw Township's point of view, we've always, they've always thought that this was included as a part of Minnehaw Township, and they've rendered services to my neighborhood. And there is a tax base issue, but it's very minimal because the taxes that we paid to the township are negligible.
So the services that are being provided from the township to this neighborhood, that would continue regardless of this vote today, is that true?
No, not necessarily. I mean, they've been furnished because we were a part of the township. I suppose that some other arrangement could be made.
I was under the impression that the city of Eastborough was paying for the services by the township, so the township was simply a contractor, if you will.
I'd have to defer that to the mayor of Eastborough, who's here, Dave Anderson. I don't know that personally.
Okay, and then, so if we did change the boundary today, would that change your ability to be a trustee in the, or... be a trustee in your current position, elected in the township there?
I'm actually not elected. I'm appointed by the trustee, and no, it wouldn't change my position.
It would change your position?
It would not.
It would not change your position? Okay. All right, I guess I'd like to talk to the mayor of Eastborough for just a moment, then. Thank you, sir.
I'm David Anderson, and I am the mayor of Eastborough.
Well, Mayor Anderson, thank you for being here. So can you answer the question, would the services from the township continue to the entire city of Eastborough regardless of this vote today?
I'd have to defer to Don Gregg. It's the township of Minnehaw that would have to determine if they would continue to provide the services if you elected not to include West Eastborough back into the township. But we all assumed that West Eastborough had been part of the township from the very beginning, and it came as a big surprise to all of us that it had been, through, I think, a clerical error, had been overlooked at some point in time.
I guess my thought is, since this is actually inside the city of Eastborough, then Eastborough is also levying a tax for city services, which would include the things that we're talking about here today. So I'm just curious, doesn't Eastborough have the primary responsibility?
We do not fund the activities that were discussed, the street cleanup and the street sweeping and debris cleanup. The city of Eastborough doesn't directly pay for that. It is part of the service provided by the township, and we all pay taxes into the township.
Okay, so the township mill levy taxes is funding those services?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, that helps me a lot. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
You do have a copy of the interlocal agreement that is between Minnehaw Township and the city of Eastborough. That's in the record, and I would confirm that the city of Eastborough is not paying Minnehaw Township directly for those services. So Minnehaw Township's expenses are being met, it sounds like, by the tax levy it imposes on the residents.
And did you receive any comments back from the citizens?
I did not. And I don't remember now the exact number of residences, but it was a significant number, and we did not receive a single phone call or letter. And I gave them my direct contact information, so.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion? Motion's made. It's been motioned and seconded?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Call vote?
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item E, presentation of the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends in Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Borchardt, Sedgwick County Appraiser. Each year prior to the mailing of 2015 value notices, we like to give a report on current market trends and activity. As far as real estate goes, there are three primary duties for the Sedgwick County Appraiser's office. One is to physically inspect each property within the county once every six years. This year, our office inspected over 35,000 properties. We also discover, list, and value all property that had significant changes. Those changes that we identified through the inspection process or through the building permit process. And we're required to update our appraisals each year to ensure that all properties are valued at fair market value, and January 1st is the appraisal date. The Constitution lays out the classifications for different property types in the state and different assessment rates. The approaches to value are all market value except for ag land. Classification for residential property is 11.5%. For commercial industrial property is 25%. Vacant lots and not-for-profit are 12%. Agricultural property is 30% of use value. Ag improvements are 25% of market value, and state-assessed property is at market value and 33% assessment rate. This chart shows the percent of total county assessed value for each of those property types. You can see that real estate bears the brunt of the burden there, and residential at 56% and commercial real estate at roughly 32%. Machinery and equipment and public utilities make up about 98% of the total assessed value. So you can see there's about 2% added from those other property types. Parcel growth in Sedgwick County. In 2015, we had a concerted effort to clean up a lot of inactive records. We worked closely with the clerk's office. These were properties that were mainly in right-of-way areas that still had active tax records. We worked closely with them, and were able to reduce the number of total parcels. There was still some subdivision and new plating. I think roughly there was additional 500 parcels added. I send the Commissioners a report each month of the sales activity in the county and see the total for 2014 was right at 11,300. It's three consecutive years of increase in sales activity. It's about 2% higher than it was in 2013. As mentioned, residential property makes up about 56% of the total assessed value in the county. In 2014, there was just over 1,000 new dwellings constructed. It's a little bit down from 2013, but very similar. The median sale price for residential property rose to 141,900. This chart tries to demonstrate the residential housing history in Sedgwick County. Along the x-axis is the year built. The y-axis indicates appraised value. Each of those blue bars is a box plot. There's a black dot in that blue area that is the median for that year built. The blue area indicates the inner quartile range, and the stems indicate 95% of the property. The horizontal red line is the median appraised value for 2015. It's 106,100. You can see from that that sometimes medians don't really represent the population. In this case, most of the properties are either below or above that median appraised value. The vertical lines indicate, there's 10 vertical lines that indicate 10% of development. So 10% of the housing was developed prior to 1930, and the next 10%, and you can see in very short gaps there that significant development occurred. Part of the point of showing this slide is that there really is currently two markets going on. The activity in the market post-1967 properties is behaving differently than the properties that were developed before that. When we compared our 2014 appraised values to the sales that occurred over the year, the median appraised value was 93% of sale price. So after we recalibrated our valuation models, tested our current appraised values, the results were this, that 56% of the properties in Sedgwick County will not change in value. 15% will see an increase in value, and 29% will see a decrease in value. The increases and decreases generally are 3% to 5%. Commercial property represents about 32% of the total assessed value in the county. The volume of commercial property sales continues to increase. 2014, there was 585. There was a significant increase in building permit activity in 2014 for commercial properties at 1,227. This is a summary of square feet added by year of the major property types for commercial, retail, industrial, and office. The industrial square footage added will be on the right. The office will be in the center bar, and retail square foot added will be on the left bar. In addition, there were 345 apartment units added in 2014. And the 2014 preliminary ratio study for commercial properties, which compared 2014 appraised value to sales that occurred during the year, indicated a median ratio of 93%. So after the final review of those values, 57% of the properties will receive no change in value. 26% will receive an increase in value, and 17% will see a decrease in value. 67% of the land in Sedgwick County is devoted to ag use. Agricultural property represents less than 1% of the total assessed value in the county. And again, this is a use value, a formula derived by the state of Kansas, and Property Valuation Division provides those values to the counties each year. The results of the application of those values, 62% will see an increase in value, 36% no change in value, and 2% will see a decrease in value. This is just a summary of those pie charts we went through by residential, commercial, and agricultural properties. This chart shows the history of new construction and revaluation results. These numbers were derived at the time of noticing. So in 2015, we saw an increase in the revaluation amount and the new construction amount compared to prior year. That does indicate two continuous years of growth in existing property value, following five years of decline in existing property value. Key dates for our office that remain, these value notices will be mailed March 1st. January 1 was our appraisal date. On March 15th, personal property renditions are due back to the office. March 23rd, we'll begin informal hearings on these new values. May 1st, the personal property values will be mailed. May 15th, the hearings for those values begin. And by June 15th, we have to have the results of those hearings in the system, and we'll certify those values to the county clerk. The key dates after that are that July 15th, the county clerk certifies the abstract to PVD. On August 25th, all the governing bodies are to certify the budgets to the county clerk. And November 1, the county clerk certifies the tax rule to the county treasurer. PVD provides for, upon request, an alternative form of value notification. We used this method last year, and it's our intent to use it again this year. Instead of mailing notices to property owners whose value did not change, we'll make them available upon request, have them posted on the website, and they can retrieve them at their convenience. So this year, we're going to mail value notice to about 45% of all the properties in Sedgwick County. This alternative method resulted in estimated savings of around $68,800. As I mentioned, property owners can get their value notice online. If they do not receive it through the mail, they will be available March 1st. This alternative method of notification in no way changes a property owner's right to appeal their value. If the property owners do not think their values reflect fair market value, they can print out the back of the value notice and return it to our office within 30 days of the date indicated on the front of the notice, and those hearings will begin March 23rd. We have lots of information available at our website. Our office location is 4035 East Harry, and we're happy to provide any information assistance upon request.
Thank you, Mike. I think we have some questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Let me jump back towards the beginning of your presentation, good Mr. Borchardt. Near the beginning, you had one classification, estate-assessed property. Would you kind of go in for the record and explain what type of property is estate-assessed and how that fits in with the numbers and how significant they are?
Those are generally your public utility properties and railroad properties. They're generally using the income approach and at market value. It's a little bit different than real estate in that it is allowed to include intangible value, and its assessment rate is 33%. The state provides those assessed values to the clerk just prior to certification.
So we won't get that information till?
First part of June.
And what percentage would you estimate would be, as a percentage of taxable assessed value here in Sedgwick County, how significant a percentage is that?
If you look at the next slide, it shows the public utility. That's the state-assessed property, represents about 4.34% of the assessed value.
Okay, so that's the assessed value, not the appraised value?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's significant, especially in light of it being assessed at 33 rather than it's a higher percentage than other properties. Let me ask, since you've got this chart up, and that's handy, would you tell me for a minute about the machinery and equipment portion and how that's changing in light of, as my understanding is, new property comes on that's exempt, that percentage is declining, and I was curious how this is compared to past years?
The legislature exempted any new purchased machinery and equipment that occurred after 2006. 2006. So generally, we'd have new purchases come on the tax roll. Since that point, we haven't had any come on the tax roll, and obviously, if something that was on the tax roll is sold, it's going to be exempt as well. So that number continues to decline and shifts the burden to the other property types.
Let me ask, you've got information on, you talked about how ag property is handled by the state, but are the ag improvements handled by your office or by the state, for that part of the agriculture valuation process?
No, the ag use is strictly for ag land. The improvements are valued based on their contributory value in the market and assessed it at 25%.
But that's done by your office or by the state?
Yes, that's done by our office.
Okay. You mentioned, and I'm going to jump, I think, to page 19 in your presentation, you commented that the average increase or decrease on residential property was running about 3% to 5%. On the commercial property, is that, if you get an increase or decrease, is that also running about 3% to 5%?
That's going to be similar. The typical change is going to be 3% to 5% above, or increase, or 3% to 5% decrease.
Can you give us kind of an overall, and I know with the utility portion being left out, it's going to be kind of rough, but looking at the county as a whole, for all classes of property, have we seen, how big a, you showed a bar chart near the end that showed an increase in both the, I think you just skipped past it, back, I think, right there, yeah. You showed an increase in terms of assessed value, and we're looking at, by my estimate, just a shade under $100 million. My recollection is total valuation of taxable property in this county is somewhere in the neighborhood, I think around, would $3 billion be a safe number, Mr. Appraiser?
$3.5 billion.
$3.5 billion? So this is an increase, but a very small percentage?
That's correct, yeah.
Do you have a ballpark number you feel comfortable throwing on?
These are just real estate numbers here. These don't include any of the personal property or public utility. This is going to be, at this point, prior to any hearings or anything, and certification, it's going to be probably around just less than 2.5%.
Okay. You went into some detail in terms of if people feel like their valuation was improper or incorrect in some way, that they could appeal it. Where are those appeals held, and is there any cost to the property owner for conducting an appeal?
There is no cost at this level. The hearings are generally held either over the phone or at our office at 4035 East Harry. Once we receive those value notices back, we have a process where we get, contact the property owner, make, schedule an appointment, and then the property owner can meet with the representative from our office to, we'll show them where, how we arrived at their value, and they can provide us any information that they wish to at that time.
And if they're still unhappy after that first level of appeal, homeowners can appeal that beyond that point too, can't they?
That's correct. If they're not satisfied with the results from that hearing, the State Board of Tax Appeals, Small Claim Division, will receive their result and schedule a hearing for the property owner with them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mike. I have no other questions from commissioners. Appreciate you coming by.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we receive and file.
Commissioner Norton, did you have?
I'll go ahead and second the receiving and filing, and then I do have.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike, go back to the ag increases. 67% of the county is in ag valuation. State takes care of that. Most of our residential and commercial, we've assessed as decreasing or flat, yet they increased 62%. Do you have a thought of why ag values, that many of them are going up, when everything else is staying flat or going down?
It's a complicated formula. It's based on an eight-year average, and a new year's added on, the old year falls off. The old year was obviously a worse year than the newer year. That's what created the increase in value.
So it's use and dollars produced by ag land that stays on or drops off, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, Matt Clark, call Luke.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
Matt Clark, next item, please.
Item F, a resolution amending Chapter 20, Article 4 of the Sedgwick County Code relating to rules and regulations for the use of Sedgwick County parks, lakes, and recreational facilities in the enforcement thereof.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Steve Clausen, Facilities Fleet and Parks Director. I'm here requesting your approval of our recommended changes to Chapter 20 of the Sedgwick County Code relating to park rules, regulations, and fees that my staff and I have been working on and do recommend. I'd like to make sure you understand that we've had the county councillor involved in this process from the beginning, and specifically want to thank Karen Powell, who's worked very closely with us on this, and so I think we've got the right language, and she's done a great job of professional oversight for us. It's been a long time since Chapter 20 had been significantly reviewed or amended. We believe it's been about 10 years since any changes of any significance have been made. Broadly speaking, there are five categories of changes within this code. First of all is the definitions. There are several definitions that are changing, inflatable structures, amusement rides, firearms, trailers, kayaks, vessels, weapons. These are all words that need updating in the definition so that we have a better understanding of, and we make clear how the rules and regulations of the park will be enforced. Secondly, changes in the language to make our code compliant with state law concerning possession of firearms is taking place in this. Consistent with state law, it'll no longer be a violation of our code to possess a firearm in the park. I do want to make clear that it remains a violation to discharge a firearm within the park unless it's for purposes of self-protection. And it also remains a violation to possess or discharge other equipment that we've identified, such as BB guns, pellet guns, and archery equipment. We feel the use of those things will be a safety problem in the parks. A third category of change, I'm going to call cleanup items to our code. Most are very minor. One that I'll mention is the current code makes reference to park property that no longer is park property, and it also does not include Northeast Sedgwick County Park, so we want to get that cleaned up. Fourth category, I just call it other rule changes. There are several. This is not an exhaustive list, but I think it does hit the significant ones. We do need to make a change to the Sedgwick County Park rules that acknowledge that although the park closes at 10 o'clock, the bike path that runs through that park is open 24/7, and no one's going to be cited for a violation if they're walking or passing through the closed park, as long as they're on the bike path. Then we need to prohibit the feeding of wildlife in our parks to only in designated locations. We've had a real problem, and it's a growing problem, with excessive waterfowl populations at those parks that are completely denuding the vegetation from the shores, and then we're having bad erosion occurring, and some real damage to our water features is occurring. We think by establishing designated places that are going to be away from the water will help us, give us opportunity to revegetate some of those banks and protect that. So we're not prohibiting feeding of wildlife to just be in areas that we're going to designate. Then we want to add a prohibition. We've had some issues at some of the walks and runs where people want to mark our asphalt pavement and bike paths for where the event starts and stops. We're saying no permanent markings of those. If you want to use chalk or so forth, that's fine, but we need to get a rule in there saying that nothing permanent. Then we want to put in a rule that requires people installing amusement rides and inflatables to contact our park superintendent before they start driving stakes in the ground. We've had issues with utility line problems and our underground irrigation systems that, so we just want to coordinate that, get a rule in there to that effect. We want to prohibit the burning of certain materials, such as coated electric wire, pallets, treated lumber, are examples, making it a violation to do that. That's just a safety thing. And we want to add a rule prohibiting the improper use of the dump station at Lake Afton. Currently, people have used that as a place to wash their vehicles, and if we can't cite a statute saying it's prohibited, it's difficult to enforce that. They've also, we've had situations where they're dumping stuff that is not the intended sewage material to go into the lagoons there, so we want to have a prohibition for that. Then lastly, category is the code revisions relating to fees and deposits that we're recommending for change. The intent is that the fees would be and remain consistent with market rates in and around this vicinity, and as well as contribute to the cost of operations for the park, and to continue the high-quality park facility operations that we have there. So I'm going to go through, this is not going to be an exhaustive list of the changes, but I think it does fairly represent what the changes are going to be. Boat permits go up between $1 and $2, depending on the size and horsepower of the boat. Camping permit fees go up $1. Electrical hookups go up $1 per day. The day fee at Lake Afton for each vehicle goes up $2 per day. Then we wanted to establish a new fee of $5 for the use of the dump station out there at Lake Afton, kind of relates to what I just mentioned, people improperly using that dump station. People that have camping permits don't have to pay this fee. If you have a camping permit, you're welcome to use the dump station. We're finding people in the vicinity who aren't using our facilities coming out and dumping their contents of their sewage stuff in our dump station, and so we're going to permit them to do that as long as they pay our $5 fee for that. The cost for renting our shelters would also go up under this proposal. There's a wide variety of shelters available for rent, ranging from unenclosed group shelter facilities to large, modern, air-conditioned facilities with kitchens, large bathrooms, sometimes fireplaces. These facilities, especially the larger air-conditioned facilities, are in very high demand, generally reserved months in advance, so that the weekends are almost always completely booked. Each facility is priced differently, depending on the size and features. We did not recommend a change for the, reserving the relatively small, open-sided shelters. They remain at $25 per day. The medium-sized shelter reservations go from $40 to $50. Sunflower Shelter, it's kind of representative of some of the larger shelters. It has all the modern conveniences, air conditioning, kitchen. It's one of the bigger shelters, fireplace. Its rate goes from $150 to $175 per day. And I was made aware this morning of a news report talking about the rate change for Plum Shelter. Plum Shelter is a facility that was torn down 10 years ago. It was destroyed by termites, and so there has been no Plum Shelter. 10 years ago, it was basically a shed that we rented for $75. It had no air conditioning, it was a smaller facility, no kitchen. But we liked the name, so we're retaining, we have a new Plum Shelter that we're in the process of opening up. It'll open in about 60 days. It's a, it'll be by far the nicest facility we have. It's larger, full kitchen, big bathrooms, fireplace. It's got a veranda that goes all the way around the exterior of it. It's going to be a very highly sought-after facility. People are already making inquiries. The rate for it will be $250 per day, and we think it'll book up very quickly. Then I want to talk about large event fees that will change under this code. We've had a single $250 special event fee that does not really seem appropriate, especially for the growing number of big-volume, high-revenue-type events that are taking place at the park. Those events, because of their size, nearly overrun the park or take up large portions of the park and stress its resources. So we are recommending changes that would, for events that don't exceed 1,000, we wouldn't change the rate at all. It would remain $250. For those events that go up to 3,000 people, the rate would go to $500, and for those events that would go to 5,000 people, the rate would go to $750. If the group is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, the fees are much less, very dependent on what their specific needs are. So I've gone over and hit the high points, I think is the way to say this. It's a 30-page document, and there's edits, as I think you've seen all through the document. You've been briefed on these personally. We do ask for your approval for this recommendation. I want to acknowledge, Mark Stroff is in the room, our park superintendent. He and his staff did most of the work and research on this, and between he and myself, maybe we can answer any questions that you may have on this.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. Want to get a few more details, because I know Canadian geese have been a problem in a variety of locations. Is there anything that prevents, under the current rules or under these proposed revised rules, that would prevent folks from feeding Canadian geese? Because they are a problem, and they're a threat to aircraft, and we undergo efforts to try and keep them out of the, particularly out of the grounds close to any of the airports. So I would like to try and get a clearer understanding of how these current and proposed rules would address that particular part of the waterfowl problem.
Well, currently, there are no restrictions for feeding the wildlife there at all, and it happens a lot. There's not too many times you can't go to Sedgwick County Park without seeing someone with a couple of loads of bread. I mean, they bring large, the food is out there, and so the animals are following. But they're doing it right at the shores of the water, and we're hoping that a reasonable strategy to try to improve that situation is to move those locations where we're still going to allow people to feed the birds. It seems to be very, something a lot of people enjoy and highly sought after. We'll get a lot of pushback even on this, but we think if we move those away from the water, that we have a chance of improving our situation with regard to the erosion.
Well, I'm concerned, obviously, you mentioned erosion, that's a factor, but other animals will enjoy, if people are throwing food out, and I don't particularly, whether it's possums, skunks, or a variety of other animals that I don't consider liabilities, not assets. Anything that's left out there, if the Canadian geese miss them, that they could get picked up elsewhere. So I would have a concern about that, particularly Sedgwick County Park, because we're really not that far off the flight path for a number of the aircraft going into Mid-Continent, and there's airports, small airports north of Sedgwick County Park too, up near Valley Center, and that's a concern. Maybe a discussion to go on. Let me ask, you mentioned vehicle fees. I know there are some large-volume events that sometimes the schools hold. I attended one event- one event the number of schools were involved in out at Lake Afton, and I don't believe there was any sort of a vehicle fee charged at that time. Would this...these proposed rules change that?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Shroff, park superintendent. For any event or people that rent the shelters, the vehicle fee does not apply, so they would be exempt from that.
Okay. Well, for instance...let me be specific. For instance, I know some of the schools use Lake Afton for a cross-country meet in the fall, and I...last year, I'm not aware of any vehicle fee that was charged for people driving in there. Would this change?
No.
Okay. So when you talk about the large numbers, that would be tied to a rental of a shelter?
Anybody that attends...if you rent a shelter at Lake Afton, anybody that attends your party or your event would not be charged a vehicle fee.
Okay. For instance, I know the sheriff holds the lock camp out there. Would that...anything change under this for them?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Peter John?
Yeah, well, thank you. Let me just throw out for the record that I've had some folks ask about being able to ride or walk along the bike paths in and around Sedgwick County Park. And I was curious, from the superintendent's perspective, if this had been a significant issue or a problem and any concerns in terms of people trying to transit, because they can obviously walk around pretty much most of the perimeter of the park as it is right now, and it's like any other city sidewalk, even though it is technically...most of that area is actually an unincorporated Sedgwick County, although there are small portions, I believe, the city is Xanax near 13th and Ridge.
This is not a new problem. There are people in that park almost 24/7 all the time. Regardless of weather conditions, they're in there walking. This will just allow them to be legally in the park. It won't be violating any of the rules.
Okay. Well, I...you know, particularly for folks who are around the perimeter, that was one of the concerns I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at page 25, and there's a Class H violation for possession of a weapon. Now, weapon is defined as a BB gun and anything that has a projectile, but not including a firearm. Is that correct?
That's right.
What is a Class H violation or Class G? There's a G's and H's, I see throughout this document. So what are those exactly?
It is not in this document. I've looked at them, but I will have to get back to you on what those specific violations are.
Is there anything else in this document that makes a violation of possession of something that's illegally? Anybody's allowed to own one of these. It's not illegal to own one, but possession is now a violation of this with some type of punitive action. So is there anything else in this document that is a punitive for just simply having possession of something, a legal product?
You know, I'm thinking of other things that are illegal to possess that are not in this code. I can't think of anything else that's in this code that is illegal to possess.
Well, I guess I have a concern about a violation, albeit maybe not a very significant one, but a violation simply for possession of something that's a legal product. And that concerns me a little bit. And I do appreciate the change in the policy with respect to the state's changes of firearms laws, and that's, I think, a smart move. But this seems like a leftover. I understand that people might have it and be tempted to do something bad, but reality, I'd like to make the action punitive, but not the possession of the item. So I have a concern about that one thing there. Can I also have a question about the total fees? It looks like...I don't have a calculator with me here, but it looks like it's about 25% fee increase overall, because we're going from about $185,410 to about $46,991 increase in our fees is projected. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So does the park generally create revenue? Does it pay for itself, or is this subsidized by other taxpayers generally?
It's...I was asking myself that question and trying to compare. You've used...you found the number, the $185,000 of revenue that we projected on that document that I'd sent your way. Well, just the operational cost of all the parks is about $888,000. So really, it's just a small portion of the cost of operations. Does the revenue contribute to the operations of the park?
So...
The rest of it is general fund.
Okay. So again, so this park generally is subsidized by the taxpayers, then? And so this is a step of, I would call it, personal responsibility, people paying for the things they use type of thing?
Yeah.
Okay. All other questions? Thank you.
Steve, one of the things this does is open up the Northeast Park. Is that right?
Well, not...actually, the action to open up Northeast Sedgwick County Park has been approved already. This just acknowledges that in the document and allows us to impose the same rules or impose rules on Northeast Sedgwick County Park. Without any changes to this, we would have no way of enforcing rules there.
Are we allowing people in there now?
No. No. We really haven't had much problem with it. We're still trying to get the native grasses established. We have a contractor. We're obligated under the terms of the agreement that we talked about recently to note what the perimeter of the park is. We're going to put a little two-strand barbed wire fence around it so that it's clear where the...what the boundaries are. And we're...our commitment is to have it available for the park...for the public to use in the spring. And I think we're going to make that.
Well, I have some concerns about that, which we've talked about. I think we need to reevaluate some of that, but that will be reflected in my vote today. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution.
We have a motion. We have a second. Same...oh. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner...Chairman Ransell?
No.
Motion passes three to two. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
IMG, report at the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on February 12, 2015.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of February 12 results in four items that we're presenting to you this morning for approval. Item number one is street improvements for Maple Street between 119th and 167th Streets West for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Cornejo and Sons LLC in the amount of $2,533,543.96. Item number two is the Panasonic Toughbooks for emergency medical services. The recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for an initial purchase in the amount of $114,254 and to establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is the IBM FileNet maintenance and support for the 18th Judicial District Court. This recommendation is to accept the quote from International Business Machines Corporation in the amount of $66,998. And item four is the medical bill review services for risk management. This recommendation is to accept the quote from CorVel Healthcare Corporation and to establish contract pricing as listed above from March 1, 2015, through January 31, 2016, and with four one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the four items.
Mr. Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin with a clarification on item number one, and if Mr. Spears needs to jump in here. The information I've got says Maple between 119th and 167th Street West, but above that, on the very top line, it says Maple between 167th to 199th Street. My recollection is 119th Street on Maple. Maple's in the city of Wichita from 119th Street to roughly about...somewhere between 151st and 167th. So are we talking about 167th to 199th Street in this...on this bid? I'll throw it out to either Mr. Thomas or Mr. Spears.
Yes, please. Excuse me. David Spears, Director of Public Works. I'd have to check those city limits, but I know our project does begin there. Just, you know, we put in a signal at 167th and Maple, so it will pick up right just to the west of 167th and go west.
To 199th. It's not going to go to 119th?
No. 199th.
199th, okay.
Okay. We'll make the change.
Okay. So the information is conflicting. We've got both listed here, and I wanted to get that corrected. So it's...for this is between 100...just west of 167th to 199th.
We'll make the corrections. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
I move we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item?
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, and I recommend you approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
At this point, we will recess the meeting of the Board of County...Sedgwick County Commissioners. Called for the meeting of the governing body of Fire District One for February 18, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item?
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Chairman Ransell?
Present. Next item?
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular fire meeting minutes of December 17, 2014. All Commissioners were present.
Commissioner Peter John?
I'll move that we adopt the minutes for the Fire District meeting of December 17, 2014.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
Next item?
New business. Item B, a resolution of Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, providing for the employment of a fire chief for such district.
Commissioners, you have the resolution before you, and it's appropriate to take whatever action you deem necessary.
Do we have any questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution that specifies the authority for hiring of the fire chief, that that authority be vested in the county commission. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Say it again.
That...well, this resolution does, it specifies that the authority for the hiring of the fire chief be vested in the Board of County Commissioners?
The resolution says employ, discipline, terminate the fire chief by the Board of County Commissioners. Yes.
Employ, discipline, and terminate. Okay. The recommendation came from the Board of County Commissioners for this. Did it come from staff or from the Fire District or from representatives, some of the communities in the Fire District?
As far as I know, it came from the Board of County Commissioners.
Is there a...is there a problem we're trying to solve with this, or is this just a...or is the purpose of this just structural for the...
You'd have to ask the Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, maybe...maybe...would you want to comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
Do you have any other comment?
Well, I do have some thoughts about it. I just want to...I don't know. I guess it's...to be specific about what I'm talking for or against is what I'm trying to get to the point here. I've talked to some representatives from the communities who are in the Fire District, who are also in my commission district, and leadership of those communities have asked, you know, why are we doing this? And the first question, and then they gave their opinion that their leadership of their communities would not support this move. They were...they didn't have a lot to say because they weren't aware this was coming until, you know, we saw the publication of our agenda. And I asked why this...what's the objection? And they said, well, they're afraid that the appointment of the fire chief might become more politicized and more political in nature rather than depended on qualification and professionalism. And I, you know, my response was, well, I don't...that's not the intent of it. I mean, we still would intend to hire someone who's qualified and professional. And so they...I think that was their main thing, had to do with professionalism and with the idea of patronage or politicizing this appointment. In my understanding of...or my trying to analyze this and come to a personal position on it, I can understand perhaps the theory or the overall structural reason for doing this, but as a pragmatic or practical issue, I'm wondering what might be the consequences of us taking this action. Right now, our fire chief, his particular position resides within the Department of Public Safety, and his first...he reports, I believe, directly to the Director of Public Safety, and then that chain of command goes to the county manager. We are not excluded from that in any way, and we have the opportunity and the authority to challenge any appointments or any hires. We can express, I think, a fuller inclusion in a hiring process if we desire that, but it just seems to me that we've...this has fallen under, as far as I know, ever since I've been here, but maybe...certainly longer than that, it's fallen under the authority and the responsibility of the county manager. I don't know if there's a problem we're trying to solve. I don't think there's a problem we're trying to solve. And as we think about negotiation with the Fire District Number One Union and those labor negotiations, I don't know if this implies we're getting more involved in that, whether we're taking our Director of Public Safety out of that, or whether we're going to make this change, and none of the other operational processes will be changed. So those are just some of the questions I have that hopefully we can clarify. And that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Norton?
Well, I do have some concerns. I'm probably not going to be supportive of this resolution. It appears to me that there's going to be a duality of reporting. Because you hire, give information and direction to and can terminate that individual, that would indicate to me that they would directly report to the county commission and on a daily basis. I don't know that as a board, we need to try to micromanage and try to understand every little detail of what goes on. I think that's why we have a hierarchy of a county manager and a public safety director, that a lot of that can go through their filter. They're professionals. They're on the spot every day. So that duality of reporting of who the fire chief reports to, right now, is the Fire District. We have plenty of input, and we are... District, we have plenty of input, and we are the board that sets policy, directs the County Manager on items of personnel. And I think we have plenty of authority. If we are not pleased with the hire, are not pleased with the direction that a Fire Chief is taking, we have plenty of input to the County Manager and the Public Safety Director to make some changes, or do some alterations, or to address issues. So I think we've got a pretty good system right now. It's worked for many years, and I'm not going to be supportive today unless new information comes up. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're in an interesting situation this morning because, and I appreciate my colleagues' comments, because the Fire District is very important, but it is not all of Sedgwick County, unlike almost all our other departments that are countywide. The Fire District is its own separate entity, and that's why we're at this part in the meeting. And we're the elected body, we're the body that ultimately the responsibility comes to in terms of public accountability for the Fire District. And I view this as ratifying the decision that was made earlier. I don't see the problems that we have, I mean, organizationally, there are four folks who report directly to the County Commission. And unlike other local forms of government, you've got here in Sedgwick County, County Manager, Mr. Buchanan, we've got our Director of Public Works, Mr. Spears, we've got our County Counselor, Mr. Usen, and we have, was with us a little bit earlier, the County Appraiser, Mr. Borchardt, who report directly to the County Commission. I don't see this as changing that in a way that would, on a day-to-day basis, be significantly different. But we are sitting here today, not as the, right at the moment, as the Board of County Commissioners, we're sitting here as the Board of Fire District Number One. A lot of other Fire Districts around the state, just like their other local governmental bodies, and the ultimate responsibility, the buck's going to stop with the elected folks. And so I view this as an effort to ratify and confirm the decision, the selection that was made earlier. I don't see this changing on a day-to-day basis in any significant way, so I do be, I'd be supportive with the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other Commissioners have questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. As a state legislator, last few years, we've had a number of, number of items come to the legislators that relate to public safety and fire regulations and things like that. The elected at the state level have had a responsibility, I think, to rein in some of the ideas that have been brought forward in, in, I'm sure it's a very good effort to try to create more public safety, but it's very burdensome to people. One of those examples was the idea that we would install, require sprinkler systems inside new, all-new home construction. It's a great idea, it would certainly save lives if you had a fire, you certainly want to have that in your home, but that's, any homeowner can certainly make the choice to do that, but if they wanted to regulate and mandate, that would be a state law. And so the, the folks across the state that are in the business of public safety came out and supported that idea and pushed it forward, and the elected did not agree. And so there's this disagreement, I think that naturally happens. The, those in the public safety group like to provide as much public safety as possible, but, but to regulate, mandate, and control, and push forward limits to people who have the choices to do those things, understanding the risks that they take. I think that someone needs to be responsible to, to provide, I guess, a little bit of balance. I don't have any problems with anybody in Sedgwick County as far as anything they've done to, to promote something that I think would be unreasonable. I have no examples of what's over, so I don't anticipate anything would change as a result of this resolution today. But I just think as a matter of principle, someone needs to be the elected that would represent the people. If there is ever a situation that we would disagree on, you know, if the, if the fire personnel, the Fire Chief would bring something to, to become a policy of our county, we'd have to have a way to, I guess, to appeal that, or provide, I guess, the democratic voice of our constituents in this regard. So I would support this resolution. I think it's a proper way to set up government. I think this is the right way, right thing to do today. Thank you.
Mr. Usen, would you care to comment? We've spoken on this about the legality of this, and could you share your legal opinion on, on this?
I'm happy to share it if Commissioners allow me to share it.
I have no objection.
Anyone, no objections? Okay.
Richard Usen, County Counselor, I was asked to look at this issue and, in looking at it, determine that the authority for hiring and disciplining and terminating a Fire Chief does reside in the Board of County Commissioners. It's an issue that, to my knowledge, in the 30-plus years I've been in the County Counselors' offices, never come to our attention. We, I guess, have always assumed, along with everybody else, that the manager has that authority. But in looking at it, I think it's pretty clear that that authority resides with the Board of County Commissioners. Having said that, of course, you can, you can give that authority to the manager if you want to, but the fact is, is that in our investigation, that has not been done. So you can, you can either adopt this resolution, or you can give that authority to the County Manager, as you have for many positions that are under the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, with respect to other Commissioners, for example, we have a resolution that says we appoint the manager, the county counselor, the public works director, and then, but it authorizes the manager to hire everybody else, basically. But there's been nothing with respect to the, to the Fire District, we've just kind of, so this is basically, I guess, I would characterize this as correcting an oversight. We have not addressed this issue specifically. We have one or two options. We could, we could specifically say the manager has the authority and delegate it, or we could reserve that for ourselves, as we're doing here today.
Yes.
Okay. And this, this doesn't say anything about the day-to-day operations will change or anything like that?
It does not address the day-to-day operations. It really leaves that kind of up in the air, I suppose.
Okay, thank you. Everyone who's talked to me about this, that has asked me about it, I've made it very clear that the day-to-day operations wouldn't change. I've spoken to Chief Leake, and he's fully supportive of this resolution. I don't know if he has anything he'd like to say, or if Commissioners have questions, but we are the governing body of the Fire District, and I think we should hire the Fire Chief, just like we hire the County Manager. And I understand that in the past, the manager's been allowed to, but as we found out, we really didn't have the authority to do that. And so I believe that the correct measure is to preserve that authority to ourselves, since we are the governing body. And I think this will have not, have, the intent is not to have any effect on the day-to-day operations of the Fire District. That will not change. Are there any other questions? I would like to make a motion that we take the recommended action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion that we approve the resolution, ratify and confirm the selection and appointment of Davis Leake as Fire Chief for Fire District Number One.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Seeing no other business to come before the board or the governing body of the Fire District Number One, we are now adjourned. And we'll call back to order the regular meeting of the Sedgwick County Commissioners. And we're now at other. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a quick comment for other, I want to mention that February 18 is a significant day in American history and point out the fact, and some may consider this kind of a dubious point of distinction, but it's an important point of distinction regardless of whether it's dubious or not. I'll let everyone who hears this decide for themselves. But on February 18, 1841, the United States Senate had its first, very first filibuster. And that extended discussion lasted until March 11. To give folks an idea of how things occurred. In 1885, Mark Twain's classic, The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, was published. And in 1977, there are folks out there like myself who can remember, the very first space shuttle, Enterprise, took its maiden test flight attached to the top of a Boeing 747. So February 18, significant day in American history, just wanted to add that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other Commissioners have other? I'd like to address an issue that's come up. We've had a couple of off-agenda items recently, and I'd like to talk about that. I think the manager would like to say something in that regard as well.
Commissioners, the issue of off-agenda item that come up, especially the item regarding REIT, but I wanted to make sure we were clear. I have, it takes some responsibility, if not a lot of responsibility, for that not being on the agenda. Commissioner Ransell made it clear that he would like that on the agenda, and it did not, it did not get on. As soon as we discovered that, and that would have been, it was not on the rough draft when we sent out on Tuesday, but when we discovered the final agenda, it was not on the final agenda that was sent out Friday. We immediately did an off-agenda item, sent it to you, notified the press, and I was going to notify REIT, but discovered that the REIT staff and the board had already been notified. And so that's, that's what, that's what, that's what occurred. It's never, we work hard not to try, try not to have off-agenda items, but when we do, we try to make sure that if it's discovered soon enough, that we give people plenty of opportunity, those who would be affected by, by that action.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, and that was the intent. We had some miscommunication. It didn't work out, but we notified, everybody who was involved knew about this going into it, to include Commissioners. So let me get this correct, Bill. This is not part of some vast right-reating conspiracy, is that correct?
I don't know that.
Oh.
You didn't prime me on that.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway. So, and we had, we had another one last week that was, I think, procedural, because I accommodated a request from one of my fellow Commissioners, I didn't really think it was necessary, but we did. So I just wanted to get that on, on the record. I'd kind of mentioned this when it came up to begin with, but I think it's important to get that out there, that there was no intent to deceive or anything like that. And we have instituted a thing on the website where you can sign up for agendas, and if there ever is an off-agenda item, which happens from time to time, those people that have signed up with that will also get those as well.
Absolutely.
And if anyone ever has any questions about these sorts of things, and then they want to clarify, they could easily pick up the phone, contact you or I, and we could clarify that for them within a few minutes. Is there any other business to come before the County Commission today? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.